We can address our kids' safety at the same time that we can acknowledge that we have, you know, broad issues around homelessness that need to be addressed and they shouldn't really be treated as mutually exclusive. Our kids' safety has become politicized. And so if we don't put pressure on our city to acknowledge that this needs to be a priority regardless of who's sitting in city council, we run the risk of this backing up the next time. I really want to see always when we make decisions where we're giving anything to the market, we're getting something back.
Hello, Boulder and the wider world. This is the Sharing Boulder podcast. My name is Philip Ogrin and for episode 43, I spoke with Teri Bernicich, who is a candidate running for city council. I sat down with her at her kitchen table in her North Boulder home. We talked about the Safe Zones for Kids ballot measure, homelessness solutions, affordable housing, infill development, zoning and parking reform, and e-bikes, among other subjects, including a project being developed by Goose Creek Community Land Trust, which is a first of its kind equity co-op at 750 North Street. I hope you enjoyed this conversation with Teri Bernicich. Hi, Teri. Welcome to Sharing Boulder. Thank you so much for taking time today to be on the podcast.
Thanks for inviting me. I'm excited to be here.
You bet. Maybe just take a couple of minutes to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about why you're running for city council.
Yeah, sure. I, my name's Teri Bernicich. It's a little bit of a strange name. It's Croatian and it is my maiden name. I probably should have changed it, honestly. I've had to deal with it my whole life. I moved here nine years ago from San Francisco. I have two, two kids. They're both at Boulder High School now and really enjoyed living here. But I got involved with the Safe Zones for Kids Initiative after kind of observing some conditions around the school that were a little concerning to me. We got together as parents and put the Safe Zones for Kids Initiative on the November ballot. And in doing that, I had the chance to really meet with a lot of folks in the city, county, school district, everywhere, and trying to understand, you know, sort of what's going on and how we're navigating these, these issues that are, that we're experiencing in the community and just felt that there was a lot of siloing and a lot of focus on things other than problem solving. And so I came to this really, you know, out of, you know, purely a desire to...
So when you say you were involved, I, for some reason, I thought maybe you had started the, the initiative?
Well, there were actually about, it was back in October of last year, there was a couple, a woman, actually, that was, there were a lot of encampments around the school at that time. And there was a woman named Jennifer Rhodes who had circulated a, like a survey or whatever, that basically was asking parents to sign on a petition about, you know, asking the police to really enforce safety measures around the school. That really snowballed and they got thousands of signatures and through the course of that, got connected with six or seven other parents in the area. And we really started the initiative by meeting with every city council member and asking them if they could, you know, commit to ensuring the safety of the kids. It really was born out of Jennifer's daughter had been lunged at by somebody walking to school. Everybody that came to this came with some personal stories. And, and so we, you know, we, we kept meeting with all of these folks and just ultimately what we concluded was that there was so much siloing going on and just not really in a willingness to step up and acknowledge that we can address our kids' safety at the same time that we can acknowledge that we have, you know, broad issues around homelessness that need to be addressed and they shouldn't really be treated as mutually exclusive. So that, I was one of the founders of it, but that's how I came to it.
And then what was your feedback from city council?
Well, it depended on who you spoke to, certainly. But ultimately, a lot of, you know, this is, there's nothing we can do about it, which was pretty much the universal response from everybody. A lot of pushback around, you know, we need to solve the homelessness problem. And I think our, our real, you know, issue with this was just that we don't think that you have to solve that. Obviously, cities are having a really hard time solving that problem and it's going to take a really long time. But we didn't feel that we could in the meantime, put our kids at risk. And so creating some stopgap measures that would allow our kids some distance while they continue to work on the homelessness problems would be more suitable. But ultimately, that was the pushback we got.
So did you just say stopgap measure? Yeah, okay. So one of the things that came up is that I would think a stopgap measure would have maybe an expiration date that wouldn't require another ballot measure to repeal. I don't know if you have any thoughts about that?
Um, well, I guess when we say stopgap, it's just basically making sure that prioritization of our kids is actually something that we as a community believe in and we are putting it into our code because we don't feel that it has been a priority and we feel that it's been subject to the whims of our, whoever's in our city council at the time. So, you know, the truth be told is that if this issue is solved, great, we won't even need to take advantage of this ordinance anymore. And if it's not solved, then we do feel like we need to be continuing to pay attention to it. The other argument I would make is that, I mean, I can't imagine a city council wanting to remove it because, you know, the city will tell you they're already prioritizing the kids, even though that's not what's happening in practice. But the city council has complete latitude to change the ordinances without a ballot initiative, as they did just recently with occupancy limits.
So I have a, a high school senior at Boulder High as well. And, you know, he commutes on his own to school. I noticed today, I went through the, under the tunnel at 17th Street.
Yeah.
And on the opposite side, there's a, there's a popular encampment place. And there were several tents there again, and an established encampment.
Yeah.
And I think there was a story about a propane tank blowing up. Can you remind me what that was?
Yeah, that was actually right at the, the athletic field, right on the perimeter of the athletic field. It was actually...
On, across the river where the stadium is? Or you mean where they practice soccer?
Yeah.
On the creek side, on the, on the creek path side?
On the creek path side. Yeah. There's a needle disposal bin right there too. So it's right in that same place. It was, there were three tents that were actually located there. We had been reporting on, the city has an app called Inquire, and we had been basically reporting them through the city's procedures. At the same time, we had been asking that both the school district and all of the city council members to acknowledge that it was here and to take action. And actually, several times, we spotted propane tanks and sent pictures of them, but no action was taken for about two weeks. And then in quick succession, we had three separate propane tank explosions happen there. And the third one, actually, my son runs track.
I actually don't know what that means even. When a, when a propane tank explodes, like what does it look like when it's done? Is it like just cracked open?
It's like shrapnel.
Or is it, is it shrapnel? Does it like blow up?
Yeah, it blows up. So it was metal.
Into small pieces? Or is it just like one?
It's more blown open. I don't know if there are small pieces that exploded, you know, but it also...
I don't mean to get too technical.
No, I don't know.
I just realized, like, I don't know.
I don't know what it looks like either. And I hope to not know.
Yeah, seriously.
But my son actually was running, he runs track and was actually running past the space where it had happened and was about 45 seconds past it when it happened. So, so obviously, it's, it's personal for me personally. And that's where we kind of went back to the city and said, you know, this isn't about homelessness. This is not a solution to homelessness in any way, shape or form. It is a solution to child safety. And in that case, it actually, you know, I think clearing the encampments is doing what it's supposed to be do, doing when we talk about child, or talk about public safety.
That's an important thing that you just said, that it isn't addressing homelessness. Cause they're kind of, they're, they're kind of orthogonal, like, like the amount of enforcement that you have for a camping ban.
Yeah.
Is like, it doesn't increase or decrease homelessness. It's just like, it's just a separate thing that, that, right, that addresses, that addresses safety. But I, so that's an important distinct, that's actually a thing where you and the people opposed to this measure agree. It's like, it's like these, they're separate things, but...
Do we though? Cause I, I mean, the, the position, certainly the op ed that, that Mr. Hamilton wrote against it was all about trying to find more solutions to like homelessness and other issues. And so I, I don't, I, that was sort of the impression with, to me, was that they were looking for more solutions to homelessness and that this was distracting from that.
Oh, well, I think, I mean, my understanding is that the whole city is thinking about what are the solutions for homelessness. And we're all like, trying to figure out what's going to work and what's not going to work. And so that, that doesn't, yeah, but...
I'm just representing from the Safe Zones perspective. This isn't a solution to homelessness. It's just a solution to making sure that our kids are safe getting to and from school. And, you know, where I think there's a little bit, to me, like confusion is that the countermeasure, while it says it's solutions, it's not actually offering any solutions. All it's...
Well, there's no countermeasure. But, but you mean the campaign against?
Campaign against it.
Yeah.
Yeah, is basically saying we'd rather do solutions. And the question is what solutions is it proposing?
Oh, yeah. Right.
And, and again, bigger issue being that if we're talking about solutions to homelessness, we've been working on them for years and we're not making any headway. So what does, where does that leave our kids in the meantime? And I think, you know, we, certainly on the Safe Zone side, we don't see these as mutually exclusive and we would absolutely love for other community members to come together and get an initiative on the ballot that actually makes some meaningful progress against some of these other issues. Like for sure, let's do it. I'd support it a hundred percent.
Great. I guess one, one of the things that they said this morning that was compelling to me is that we basically already live in Safe Zones land. Like when you think about what, what gets passed, if it gets, if it gets voted on.
Yeah.
What the world looks like a year from now, it'll probably look very similar in terms of prioritization, in terms of how many homeless people there are. Like if, if it is like some improvement in safety, then that's, that is one thing. But my understanding of it is it's very similar and very aligned with what the city already does. Like the police chief was saying that they already prioritize schools. And like my sensibility of, is like, if Eisenhower Elementary School had
Yeah.
An encampment show up within 500 feet of it and there were propane tanks being used, like, like the city would be pretty quick about...
Probably because it's out of the zone, but they don't do it around, around Boulder High School.
Yeah, so...
So I think that's part of it. But I think the other issue is that, I, I just actually came from an event and I spoke to Joe Tatiucci, who runs utilities, the SAMPs cleanups. And, you know, the, the
SAMPs cleanup?
Safe and Managed Public Spaces, the Encampment Cleanup Group. And, you know, the truth is, is that when the propane tanks have, explosions happened in March, it was a huge wake-up call for the city. And so at that point, they completely changed their policies. And you are seeing the benefit of it. We aren't having tents sitting at Boulder High School for two weeks at a time anymore. They're doing a much better job. And at the same time, they got a second cleanup crew that's come online and is taking quite a more rigorous approach toward it. And so I think the truth is, is that now that they have really put more attention on this, they more or less are achieving what we are looking for with Safe Zones for Kids, which is particularly around the areas that are problem spots, that needles aren't there, that, you know, propane tanks aren't there. The problem is, is that it's, it's, our kids' safety has become politicized. And so if we don't put pressure on our city to acknowledge that this needs to be a priority regardless of who's sitting in city council, we run the risk of this backing up the next time.
Yeah, where it's sort of like, yeah, there's not enough noise or pressure. So like the, the encampment enforcement backs off or whatever.
Yeah.
Well, so I know we don't want to spend the whole, the whole time on this.
No, I'm happy to.
But I do have one more question about this. And that is, you just mentioned that, you know, targeting Boulder High School as one particular problem spot. The provision, the, the ballot wording doesn't seem to target any particular location.
Yeah.
And in fact, it's, to me, it's kind of absurdly broad.
Yeah.
Being 50 feet from any public sidewalk. Like, I'm pretty sure we're 50 feet from a public sidewalk here. I mean, there's, like, the whole city then is like a safety zone.
Right.
Right? So what was the thought process behind having it so broad?
Well, we definitely wanted multi-use paths in there. And that's how we drafted it. It was actually the city attorney that told us to put in sidewalks as well because she said that in the code, multi-use paths and sidewalks were used interchangeably. And so she suggested that we put it in there to make it clearer. Certainly, our focus is the areas that have issues, which are the multi-use paths and the areas around Boulder High School. In terms of targeted around specific schools, you can't actually do that in the code. But the point being that, you know, Maris presented, or Chief Harold presented at a council meeting this last week and just the data around, you know, and I'm going to forget the exact statistics, but basically the vast majority of the crime that happens in this city happens within 10% of the geography. And so, you know, we can put this on there, but the reality is from an enforcement perspective, all of the resources are going to be in the areas where we have problems. It's not, it's, it's giving cover to everywhere, but ultimately the effort is going to go in the areas where there are actually things happening.
And then is the chief supportive of this measure? Yeah. Okay. I thought, I thought I saw, read something where it was like, we were already doing these things.
Well, this is my point, is that they did switch in March and they started moving towards that stuff, but they didn't have, they didn't have, there isn't a lot of transparency into how they, and...
But I guess maybe it's inappropriate. Or I mean, did she actually endorse the?
She can't endorse.
Yeah, she doesn't make sense. So whether, whether or not she supports it, I guess is sort of moot.
Yeah.
As, as a measure to vote on. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but they have, you know, the city maintains a prioritization matrix when it does its encampment clearances. And the matrix basically scores different areas based on, you know, importance and priority. And right now, that matrix does not score schools high enough to even warrant detention. So it wouldn't actually warrant clearing. And what the city's position has been is that they score all the other things, like blocking a pathway, proximity to waterways, all those things. And then if it happens to be next to a school, that gets put into the mix and it gets prioritized. And effectively, what we're asking them to do is not make it a secondary consideration, make it a primary consideration, so that it does warrant cleanup regardless of whether it's on a waterway or in a flood zone.
Well, I'm curious to go back and reread what I read this morning, which, which said, you know, that the schools were already really prioritized, like...
Yeah. I mean, you should get, you should touch base with the, you know, utilities because they'll show you, again, there's no transparency. So they...
Remind me how the utilities is?
Utilities is actually the part of the city that does the cleanups. So when they go do the cleanups, they'll get cited and then they'll give them 72 hours notice. If they haven't relocated after 72 hours, then that's when the utilities comes and basically clears the encampment.
When you said SAMPs, you gave an acronym. That surprised me because it sounded like Safe and Managed?
Public Spaces.
Public Spaces. Oh, okay. Public Spaces. Yeah. I was, I was thinking you were saying something along the lines of Safe and Managed Encampments, but
No.
We don't, we don't have, we don't have anything like that.
No, we don't. We don't.
How do you feel about that sort of thing, having managed camps?
I mean, so here's my, here's my, my overarching, taking my Safe Zones hat off for a little bit. Outside of safety for our kids, the situation we have right now in our public spaces is not safe for anybody. And the, you know, the unhoused individuals, unsheltered individuals are three and a half times more likely to be victimized. There are overdoses happening almost on a daily basis. The assault, especially assault on women is in the 80% range. So, you know, these are individuals that are suffering severe crisis. And, and we as a community have a moral obligation to, to help these individuals and, and not just turn our backs. And I feel like what we've done now is we're basically, you know, the city offers a ton of really amazing services to connect people and hopefully get them on a path to housing. But when you're dealing with the fact that roughly it's estimated 75% of the individuals that are unsheltered are suffering from untreated mental illness or severe drug addiction, the idea that they are going to voluntarily find their way and take advantage of, of services and move themselves along is just not realistic. We have to acknowledge that housing alone is not going to solve the problem. We need to help get them into the treatment that they need. So I'm really a big proponent of, we need to start building some capabilities around a continuum of treatment options that will allow individuals to get to a stable place so that they then can get on the path towards stable housing. At any given time, right now, we have about 40 spaces in our detox facility. You know, we have about 35 spaces in our shelter facilities. And, you know, we've got...
You mean, you mean open spaces?
Uh, yeah.
Available?
Available spaces. And so we just need to, I think, really, as a city, try to come up with a more, a more sustainable process for triaging these individuals. I'm pushing for a safe indoor shelter policy because I'd really, it, it concerns me to no end. And I think it sends a really bad message to our kids if we feel that allowing these individuals to suffer the way they are in our public spaces is just something that we need to do. It's, it's complacency in it.
Well, so that, I thought a minute ago, you were kind of pushing back on, on Doug and Katie's effort about solutions, not Safe Zones. Like, because they were talking about all these same things that you were just talking about, you know, in terms of
Well, again, it's solutions of homelessness versus public safety. So, you know...
But you were just, we were just talking about solutions. Or we're not talking about solutions for homelessness? No?
That is a solution for homelessness. That is not a, what I'm saying is that Safe Zones is trying to address public safety.
Yeah.
I took my Safe Zones hat off.
And now we're talking about...
And now we're talking about solutions for homelessness. So I think that we need to do that. I don't think, you know, obviously it's going to take time. It's going to take some reform within our court system. I'd like to see our courts do, you know, really try to do more alternative sentencing and, you know, drug court kind of methodologies to really get folks that are, you know, in the throes of addiction and have been, you know, repeatedly picked up to actually get pushed into some treatment options, rather than just allowing them to cycle back on the street with no, with no end in sight. So that would really, to me, be a first step. But it's really a willingness to come together around the fact that we have to insert some mental health treatment as the first steps in this, rather than just shifting people over to permanent supportive housing that has effectively no services available and, and expecting these individuals to somehow find their sobriety and find stability with no supports.
So, yeah, it's, it's interesting how lots of people say very similar things. And so like, and I know that you've thought about this a lot, right? And so what I, what I kind of think I just heard you say is that the Housing First policy that is popular with the Boulder progressive crowd is, is not what you would go...
It works for the 70% of the unhoused population that are experiencing homelessness for whatever temporary reasons and are currently sheltered. I think it's working really well for that group. And it's been a huge success. But where it's completely failing is the 30% that are unsheltered.
Yeah.
And that's universal across all the cities that we're seeing it happening. We need a different, we need a different approach towards that population. The idea that we can put them into housing without addressing the underlying drug problems is, it's irresponsible for them, but it's also problematic for the individuals that are living in permanent supportive housing and, you know, the meth contaminations and all of that kind of stuff that's happening.
Well, I don't mean to, us versus them too much in this conversation, but I don't remember ever, anyone ever saying, oh, put the, put all the mentally ill people into housing without the supportive services.
But that's what we're doing today.
Yeah.
So we put them into permanent supportive housing, even though they may be, you know, fentanyl or meth addicted. And then they get a case manager, but the case manager is one hour a week voluntary. And that's, and then we've removed them from their supportive community. And so inevitably, what happens is either they overdose in our housing, or they contaminate the housing because they're still doing meth, or they terrorize the neighbors that they're living around, who are also working on their sobriety. So, you know, the idea is in a perfect world, you would have, the permanent supportive housing would actually be more of like a sober, supported living environment, where you could really help folks and support them in a way. But we aren't committing enough services and wraparound services in permanent supportive housing.
Well, I have to say, this is very encouraging to me. I like hearing both sides talk about the radical changes that we need to help.
For sure.
To help these individuals. It's like really...
For sure. And it really comes down to, I think it's, it's doable too, you know? I mean, there's, there are a couple of people, particularly in our community with lived experience, that have really weighed in on this and have some very concrete solutions on how we can move them on a path. And I think we've got, obviously, this is a lot county and state, right? We need, we need help. We can't just do this alone. But I think there are some positive steps that we can take within the city of Boulder to at least get ourselves on the path and, and acknowledge that we need to start thinking about these issues a little differently.
So I saw you at the, at the forum, at the JCC, that, that the Chamber sponsored. And I don't remember your word, your speech, word for word, but I remember that I came away, I feel like you used the word incarcerated in that speech. And I was a little surprised, like most people don't use that word, like as a, as a, you know, kind of even tangentially in the realm of solutions. And maybe correct me if I'm wrong, or...
I think what was...
You came across this very hard on crime, so to speak.
Well, I mean, I think what the issue was, you know, what are we doing about crime? And I, I think my response was something to the effect of, you know, we all have a right to feel safe in our community and we have to stop the victimization that's happening in our businesses and our workers and our community members. You know, we've got bike thefts, we've got break-ins. And I don't know if you listened to the city council meeting last Thursday, they had a number of, of business owners that all weighed in about, you know, the times, how many times they're getting shoplifted and broken windows and employees getting victimized. We have to address those issues. We can't continue to do nothing. And where that's, where that's coming from is we have a court system right now that has bail policies. It's two things. It's one, they rip up tickets for repeat offenders. So when individuals go in...
Never mind this.
No, they do. And that, and the idea, because it's a community court, the idea being that we'd rather that you go get a driver's license or do things that will help you get closer to services. And that works, you know, maybe for the first time or the second time, or even the third time. But when these people are doing it over and over again, you have to have a consequence. And then when we really look at the district level where we're dealing with bigger crimes like drugs and things like that, it's the bail policies that they're setting. And I will give you a great example that just happened last week and you may have heard about it. But there was an individual that stabbed another homeless individual in front of the municipal building. The, they survived, but he ended up in jail. Three days later, he was released on a personal recognizance bond, meaning he had no bail, nothing. And then a week later, he was picked up in the drug, they had a big kind of sweep of Central Park and basically arrested 12 people that were all having, doing drug, drug dealing. This guy was picked up with 30 grams of fentanyl and was within 1,000 feet of the school. So he's now basically going to receive an eight year like sentence. That's the rule when you do drug dealing next to a school. The bail policy, the bail that they sent for him was $2,000. And he was arrested with like $10,000 worth of cash on him. So he's, I haven't checked today, I've been...
To see if he posted it.
To see if he posted out or not. But this is, this is happening constantly. And then they never show up for court. So they never are actually held accountable for their crimes. And so we have to fix some of those policies. I don't, I'm not into criminalizing. And this is where I'd really love to get alternative sentencing for the individuals that are suffering from drug, drug addiction. But for the people that are actually committing crimes, they need to be held accountable for those crimes, just like any of us would be held accountable for committing crimes.
Well, it's really perplexing because it's, it's not like we think that our city is run by the mafia.
No.
And that we have a bunch of drug cartels running, calling the shots around here. Like, so like, I mean, this guy's not answering to someone in a position of power, right? Like, and I'm not saying that that would make it better. I mean, it would just make, I guess it would make more sense if, if he got treated with special consideration, given what, what, what's been going on. But like, so yeah, I mean, I think for you to be asking the question of why is this guy out on $2,000?
Right.
Bail or...
After he stabbed somebody and then got caught dealing
With all this...
Huge quantities of drugs next to a school.
That are killing people. These drugs are killing people in our communities. So...
So I, there's some reforms that need to happen there. The muni court reforms, we can take care of because that's our purview. And actually, the city council, the, this municipal court judge reports to the city council. So there is some real, you know, I think room there. As far as the district courts, you know, we don't have a ton of, of freedom there. But I think the more pressure we as a community can start putting on the DA and the districts to really evaluate. And again, I, I'm a data person. And so, you know, where I've been communicating with the DA's office quite a lot to say, let's see some statistics on this. Like what, you know, for the people that we are, you know, bringing in and, and giving these bails, you know, these low bails, are they showing up for court? Or are they, you know, are we getting what we are intending out of it? Are they, you know, are we getting what we are intending out of it essentially, you know? And if it, if we aren't, we need to really kind of rethink how we're doing it.
I didn't know you were a data person.
I am a huge data person.
Tell me, tell me about that.
I'm a CFO by trade, so, um, my background is all about numbers. And that's probably why this campaigning process has been so hard for me, because I would much rather just talk about the details like forever. And I don't like all of the fluffy stuff. Um, but yeah, I, so I am very much in that sense. I, you know, all about kind of setting some K P I's, looking at metrics and really measuring, measuring, measuring to figure out if we've hit the goals that we think we're hitting. And this is where, you know, we could even segue a little bit into housing. Because I think the area, the frustrations that I have on the housing front is, um, I think that, you know, we talk a lot about the jobs, housing imbalance and the thirty thousand in commuters or sixty thousand, whatever it is, we don't know what it is these days. But I, I would like to see more data about for the housing that we're building, who are we building for? Because it seems that, you know, we're building a lot of housing that ultimately is translating into high-end rentals and high-end townhomes. And I'm not sure it's actually hitting the demographic that we're trying to build for. And so again, let's use some data here to really come up with the target and then measure to see if we're actually hitting our target. Um, so I'd like to see a little more work in that area.
And the, the demographic that we're targeting, as, as you would, I mean, let me just make my statement. I think the demographic we had a target is people that work in the city that would like to live here, so they don't have to commute so far.
A hundred percent. But if we're gonna do that, then we need to rethink what we've, the projects that we've been approving. Because, you know, building more high-end rentals and high-end townhomes, I don't, it does not seem to be solving that problem. We're not, we're not making a dent in that number. And so I think that about ten years ago, the city did a housing survey and it was a pretty high level survey. But it was essentially trying to get at that, like what were the employers, what, what is the footprint? And what, you know, what are they needing? I think we need to dust that off and do it again, because I think we need to really set some very targeted goals. I think what we'll find out in that survey is that a lot of individuals, some individuals don't want to live here because they know they can get a lot more living in Longmont or Erie. But there are definitely a number of people that would like to live here and just can't afford it. And so then we need to build a more tar, with a more targeted kind of number in mind. If it's, you know, we're doing these market rate rentals at twenty-five hundred dollars and they need to be twenty-two. What, what do we need to do when we're doing these projects to get to that number? But what I'm fearful of is that we're creating a whole separate set of housing that is housing new people that aren't necessarily the demographic that we're trying to house.
We're, uh, new, new people as in like they're just moving to the area because they like.
Like parents of kids that are getting a second home. And, you know, I think there's a lot of, these are sitting vacant, right? So like, are we actually housing the demographic that we are trying to set out to house? And that's a big question. I think that housing survey would also be really great from a transportation perspective. Because I think if we could get a really clear picture of the footprint of our in commuting workforce, that would really inform the needs around transportation. And obviously it's dynamic, it will change all the time. But I think we could really get much more targeted on our transportation infrastructure if we knew where we, who we were building it for.
So, um, assuming that the, a survey like that came back kind of the way may, you would expect it to come back. I don't know. I mean, maybe we shouldn't ask hypothetical questions like that. But, um, I'm kind of curious, like how you feel about like the East Boulder sub-community plan? If that seems like a part, yeah, okay. And, and I, I seem to remember you said something about supporting housing at the airport.
I'm open to it for sure. I, I mean, to me, so here's.
Or something like that.
Planning reserve. I think those are, truthfully, we can talk about all these little, like I, I would be open to doing some light up zoning in the neigh, in the single family neighborhoods too. However, I'm all about, you have to regulate for affordability. I don't believe that the market will get us there. Um, and, you know, being a numbers person, I feel like I have a pretty good perspective on what drives developers. And it's all, it's profit, like where they're not altruistic. So I, I'm all for the, you know, density, as long as it's got affordability commitments. And I feel like we can do all these onesies, twosies, particularly in the middle income space. It's hard to get much leverage because they are expensive and it's hard to build that in an affordable way. So it's going to be really hard to make a meaningful dent in our goals unless we consider projects like the airport and the area three planning reserve. I think those are the only really big chances we have and Alpine Balsam. You know, we're big chances that we have to really make a dent in our affordable housing in a meaningful way.
So I think everyone agrees about the, the market is not going to provide affordable housing as currently incarnated, you know? It's a, but I, I wonder, like, one of the things I feel like is always missing from that conversation is like, we created the market. It's human, it's human activity. And it's, it's like, it's, it's supposed to serve us, you know, markets. And I, I wonder if you've ever just thought about like, if you wanted to have a healthy market that actually did provide affordability, how you might do it, you know? Uh, or maybe, maybe that's not on your radar.
Well, no, I just, I would, I think everybody would like to solve that problem, but I don't, I think a market is just that. I think it's, you know, it's in, it's, um, efficient participants that will always optimize, you know, for profit. That's just the way a market works.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I would say that, um, uh, be, because it's a human invention and it's something that we, we regulate the crap out of already. And, and right now it sort of seems to be perversely incentivizing the wrong kinds of housing, you know?
How do you, how would you go about it? Like, what are, what do you think would be, I guess I'm, I'm curious.
Yeah, well, um, it's, it's hard to like propose things from where we sit now that don't sound totally crazy. Because like we, we, it's so baked into our collective imagination of how it works now, that it's hard to think outside. But, uh, let me just make one little point before I, before I, you know, uh, blow your mind. One of the things I'm always concerned about with the, what you just said about affordability is that, um, without the market as a wind in our sails. It's always like this uphill climb. And affordability becomes this way of actually restricting housing. When people don't want it, you know? And so there's a lot, and there's lots of people who say, oh yeah, I would love there to be more affordability, but I don't want it in my neighborhood. I don't want it in Boulder. I want it in Longmont or Erie or, you know, Brighton. And so, um, there's, and, and there's an aspect of, of that where it's like, oh yeah, we, we've had, we have this system where we've designed the housing market to protect our home values. And in, in past community meetings, you know, for decades, it's just been like, hey, we can't have this change because it'll affect my housing price. And so like, there's lots of reasons why housing is expensive in Boulder, uh, that are sort of explicit, you know? And so, and, and then, and then we turn around and we say, oh, well, we can only have more housing if it's, if it's designated affordable. So I, I don't know, there's just, there's some.
Well, I mean, I guess.
Contradiction there.
Yeah, I don't know. To me, I'm not, I don't think it's contradictory. Like I'm totally fine with all the infill that we're doing. But I, I would prefer that it actually be infill that is meeting our housing needs. And I don't think it's meeting our housing needs. So I, I would be all for doing those projects. I would just like to see them done with an actual target in mind, instead of just building for building sake, which is I think what's happening for the most part. And that's, you know, to me, a wasted opportunity because we don't have that much space. And so we should be very careful with every place that we've constructed to make sure that it's actually meeting our needs.
Yeah. Well, um, I'm trying to stay a little bit focused, but, um, I kind of want to go off on a tangent if you don't mind. But bill, billing for building sake, I, I do want to remind people that, that say we don't, we can only have it for affordability. That, you know, every time there's a new unit that's within a, a walkable, um, distance of, of where people work is also addressing climate. So like.
Well, except that they're not working there.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, but we do need more opportunities for people to live near work. And so.
Agreed, which is why I want it to be affordable. Because I, I mean, again, if, this is where maybe I'm wrong. Maybe we conduct the survey and maybe we find out that everybody that's commuting in could pay the prices that we're building at and they just don't want to. Maybe that's what we find out and then we should just keep doing what we're doing. But I don't think, I don't think that's what's happening. And so my fear is that we've, we haven't solved our in commuter problem. But then we've also invited in a whole nother group of people that can afford to live in these places. And they're either commuting out or who knows where they're all going. But like, we've now created another set of commuters, um, that are creating kind of a carbon footprint. Um, and we haven't addressed the main one that we wanted to get at first.
Yeah, yeah. Well, so, um, I would just say that, um, our, our regulations piled on top of, um, current market trends and pile on top of the fact that Boulder is very attractive and there's lots of high paying jobs here and lots of other kinds of service jobs. Yeah, the, the market right now is not what you'd consider healthy. It's like, it's like pathologically, like doing the wrong thing. It's like incentivizing really large homes and these high-end rentals. And, um, so I feel like there's kind of one conversation that's being had. Which is like, how do we carve out affordability, given this Frankenstein market that we don't like? And what I want to say is just like, I, I, and I, I think we ought to do that, because like we can start doing that now. But I also want to have this conversation of like, how can we change the market so that it incentivizes the kinds of things that we want? So that the winds, the, the winds in our sails. And it's not just like, because affordability often just feels like you gotta get the funds and you gotta get the programs. And then you gotta have all, you know, and it's like, it's, it's always an uphill climb and so you never have enough.
Right. And I think what you might be suggesting, or certainly I'm thinking about is like incentive based zoning. And I, I think that's a hundred percent where we need to go. And in fact, where I, you know, I, I, I've, I, with the whole occupancy limit change, I was not supportive mainly because I would have preferred to have the voters speak on that again. But that said, now that it's there, um, I feel like it was a hugely missed opportunity to really drive some affordable rents. And what I would have liked to have seen in that, in that instance, would have been some incentive based zoning. To say, hey, our standard is three, but if you want to apply for a variance to get four or five tenants, that's fine. But you have to agree to give discounted rent for those fourth and fifth tenants. Or, you know, the entire building has to, or unit has to be discounted. I think those kind of things are really incredible because it, it, it aligns what we're trying to do with the ultimate recipient. Rather than just giving windfalls to our owners and landlords and not actually making sure that it gets translated down to the renters. So I would have pursued that and I in fact will pursue that, um, if I get elected, is to try to insert some sort of an affordability provision into that. That would really, um, and I think we should be looking at all of that. All the zoning changes that we make should be, we can make them, but we want something in return. And it should be something that gets us closer to affordability.
Yeah, on, on the balance, I really like that idea, like, cause I, cause honestly, I feel like, um, there's a lot of land in Boulder that's single family zoned that would be more valuable if you could build more things on it. So at the moment that you, in, instead of just saying, hey, go, go profit. It's like, hey, this is our moment to, to, to capture that in, in, in covenants and.
Absolutely. I mean, it's, the whole thing is benefit recapture. And it's that, that just because politically, we've made a decision to change some of our housing policies, that, that benefit shouldn't be accruing to the landowners. It should be accruing to the people we're trying to get it to.
Yeah, I guess for the occupancy thing, uh, specifically, I feel like that it's, it's really a human right to not be discriminated based the kind of roommates you have. I mean, you live, you, I assume you live with a family. And so you have their roommates and, and they're preferred because of, of, of cultural norms. Or because, because we, we're encoding it in our laws, right? So I just felt like as a human rights issue, like you shouldn't, you shouldn't be, have, have, we shouldn't be in the business of saying, oh, this configuration of people, they have special rules that require affordability. This configuration of people does not, doesn't have that. And so like, that really offends me to, to like the, the notion we're gonna like discriminate this way. The other thing about like affordability is I, I also want like market rate affordability wherever we can get it. So that we're not just like using affordability as a tool to constrain housing. As I was kind of saying earlier, um, and, and I think it's like super unlikely that, um, a house that can fit more people in it, that the landlord's going to be able to charge more per person.
Oh, I, I totally disagree with you. I think that you're right. This is where I'm worried. And this is where I just, I wish if we had made that, that when we made that occupancy change, we were explicit about our expectations around landlord affordability. Because unfortunately, the corporate landlords out there will absolutely jack the rent. There, you know, you, when all of a sudden you go from, I was, I have three people in this thing to five, they're gonna claim more wear and tear, more, you know? You name it. Again, they're driven by profit. So I unfortunately, I mean, this is where I would have, going back to data, I would have loved to have seen data on this.
I can imagine that they might, they might try to get away with the same rent for, for more people, like from, like three thousand for three people and five thousand for five people.
Yeah, but the problem is.
But that seems, that seems, uh, but I can't imagine it would be like six thousand for five people.
Well, no, but the problem is, is that you've got people like living in a three bedroom that are already living there illegally, right? And so when all of a sudden the landlord finds out that it's five instead of three, they're gonna raise the rent. And then you've got these three that were splitting the rent and getting, you know, their discounted rent or five discounted. All of a sudden, it's gonna get topped up to the level the landlord thinks is fair. And so again, I, you know, we can, I don't know, I don't have all the data. But where I would have liked to have seen that go was more, way more emphasis on affordability for the tenants. And making sure, again, because to your point, when you give a benefit, you should be getting something in return. And we gave that benefit away. And I'll tell you, it's a huge benefit for these guys when they go for cash flow purposes and they go for refinancing, all of a sudden, this house is worth more. Um, and unfortunately, we missed that opportunity. I mean, hopefully we can still walk it back and insert that if, you know, if I get elected. But, um, I just, I, that's where I come from this is just, I really want to see, um, always when we make decisions where we're giving anything to the market, we're getting something back.
Fair. Great. So, uh, what do you want to, what do you want? Oh, I remember what I wanted to talk to you about. Um, you, uh, you said you were a data person and you look at numbers a lot and the budget just came out recently. I'm curious to know what you saw in that that caught your eye, that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm still, I'm still in the process of digesting it. You know, they're doing a big study session on Thursday, so I'm really hoping to get a lot more from that. Um, I, I think the overarching thing unfortunately is that it's seeming like there's very little. I mean, Nurya, the city manager keeps talking about how this is probably one of the most constrained budgets we've got. Um, so unfortunately, I think we're in a situation where we don't have a lot of, at least on the surface, discretionary spending. Um, this budget's going to get approved before I, if I get in office. So I, I will sort of have to live with what, what's there. Uh, so, but my general thought is for the next budget cycle is to hopefully really kind of sharpen our pencils a little bit on some of the things that, because I think what happens, at least it's certainly been my experience in corporate America, is you start to kind of get in a habit of funding the same things over and over again. And you're ever really questioning whether it's actually doing what you think it's doing. So I'd like.
People's jobs are on the line.
And so, but really trying to do again, a little more metrics driven management around like, what are we trying to achieve out of this spending? And is it actually hitting those targets? Um, and then the other area around kind of budgeting and just in general that I'd like to bring is just more discipline and transparency around. Not only what we're spending money on, but when we make decisions to spend money, what are we choosing not to spend on? Um, because I think that, you know, and this is, every organization is guilty of this. It's always easy to focus on everything you want, want, but then you don't actually have any conversation about what's going by the wayside. And I think that's.
You tend to want those things when they're gone.
Right, exactly. And that's happening right now, right? Like we're seeing South Boulder Rec Centers in shambles. And, you know, those are decisions that we made somewhere along the way where we took, you know, money out of the reserves and now we're paying the consequences. So, you know, as a community, we can have collective values and we can all agree that we want to focus on one thing over the other. But we should be having those conversations openly so that there aren't any surprises.
Sounds good, sounds good. All right. Well, uh, Nicole Spear, as you may know, is a, is a big budget person who studies closely. And, uh, um, it's, it, it really matters to, to understand how it works and how it reflects our values. And so I'm glad that you're interested in that.
Yeah, no, I will be spending a lot of time on that. I can't, I can't wait to get my, it's been a while since I've worked on a budget. So I would like to look into that a little bit. But, um, but I think it is, you know, I think, I think our, our city is also like in the, in the throes of kind of changing over their budget methodology a little bit. And they're actually getting much more data driven in, in, in a resort, kind of a results oriented angle to budgeting. So I think there's a big opportunity here over the coming years to really make some, some good changes in how we think about spending.
So I, I was a little surprised that you're, um, I, I, I don't. So I I was a little surprised that you're um, I I don't know Plan Boulder very well. I'm kind of in the Boulder progresses, Better Boulder, bedrooms are for people's sphere of of influence. I don't think of Plan Boulder as being super excited about uh infill development or up up zoning, single family zone. And you kind of uh gave some lip service to that, but I'm kind of curious to know, like, what what does that mean to you? Like, would would you be willing to change this neighborhood zoning?
Definitely. And so so real, to be clear, I don't, I mean, I didn't know anything about any of these special, I'm gonna call them special interest groups, but um, you know, I understand that plan has a history of being, you know, kind of quote unquote anti-growth. I think they've come to a a realization that that position is untenable, given where we're at. So I was completely forthright with them about everything that I've just said to you about my feelings on housing and I did not get one bit of like, oh, that doesn't align with us. So I think they're probably in a in a bit of a change themselves. Um, but certainly, like I said, I, you know, I am absolutely a hundred percent for up zoning um to some degree in our neighborhoods. I don't want it to turn into a Denver situation where it's every single house.
High rises or
Yeah, no, but I but I think you could come up with a cool approach where it's like, you know, one on each block or one on each corner or whatever, just so we could come up with that. But again, my feeling is is, you know, the these houses are expensive and if I know for sure if they, you know, take the house across the street and turn it into a triplex without any commitments on affordability, it will be three million and a half dollar homes.
Yeah.
And to me, that's not, that's not solving the problem. I'm not really that interested in building more housing for people that can spend a million and a half dollars on a home. Um, and I think it has consequences then to the affordability of the rest of the homes in the neighborhood as well. So I am all for it if we use, you know, affordability as a as a measure and all of that. So again, maybe permanently deed restricting one of the three or looking at kind of cottage style housing on some of the larger lots, like I think there's great ways we can tackle it. Um, but I would only be open to it in with an affordability commitment.
So I feel compelled to tell you a little bit about David Adelson's project because um you hadn't heard it. We started talking about it earlier and I I had dinner with David recently and he gave me grief because I hadn't brought it up on the podcast and
Okay, bring it up.
So um, and one reason it's sort of salient here is because we're in the neighborhood that he lives in, uh, or just or we're just a few blocks away and what he's trying to do is take a house across the street from him that him and some other investors have purchased and turn it into uh, basically a scrape and put a mansion in.
Okay.
Except that instead of a single family home, it's um it's configured for uh like ten to twelve people and as as many condos or as um in this case, he had to scrap the mini condo plan because of city regulations and he couldn't get any kind of exception. I mean, the zoning just doesn't allow
Right.
miniature condos. But the but the idea being, so he's he's doing, right now, the project is a for sale co-op.
Okay.
So that um people have rooms and then there's a big shared space upstairs. And so from the street, it looks like any other large house that has gone in, you know, and it'll be an expensive home too.
Yeah.
Um, but it gets shared twelve ways
Right.
with an ADU in the back.
Right.
And then there's covenants on car ownership so that they're sharing electric vehicles. Maybe there'll be a Colorado car share there or maybe it's just
Right.
they own, they own the vehicles. I'm not quite sure how that works, but um I love going to his website and imagining uh creative people, young professionals. I don't know, I'm not sure that it's ideal for young families or whatever, but it seems like a nice tool to add to the toolkit. I'm curious like
That sounds amazing to me and I think that that's a perfect example of incentive based zoning, right?
Yeah.
Because it's like probably violates a million things that we have on our books today. But if you can demonstrate that you're providing a really amazing affordable option, I think that's one where we do a trade off, right? And the city grants those kind of zoning exceptions and it should be actively pursuing those types of solutions. I'm I'm fascinated by it and I wonder if he's actually kind of blueprinting, he should, I mean, depending on how it goes, he could maybe blueprint something like this because this could be the future.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, that this will be music to David's ears. He he, I I mean, because I I feel like there's there's actually a lot of these um single family zone neighborhoods. We were talking about vacancy earlier and I'm concerned that there's, you know, be our population is decreasing in Boulder.
Yeah.
Having to do with in in my mind, I don't know what the all the data is and it's difficult to get specific numbers on specific kinds of housing configurations, but there's a sensibility in town that there's a lot of houses that are occupied, very large houses occupied by one or two people.
Yep.
And um th- these large houses take up a lot of space in terms of the yards, their foot, their total footprint and they drive up
Yeah.
housing costs. And so, yeah, the notion of having houses that are purpose built
Yeah.
or purpose reconfigured for a lot more people.
Yep.
That but they but then when you look at it, it's still like
It looks like a single family home.
Doesn't look like a
Yeah, one, the house right on the corner was a co-op, but they just converted it back to a single family home, but same thing, there were like seven people living there. So um, yeah, no, I like it. I, you know, again, I think everything in moderation, right? Like, you know, I wouldn't I I I know that there's, you know, the people in the big homes are are in our crosshairs for sure. Um, and I certainly like the fact that the city is starting to move towards incentivizing smaller builds through, you know, I think they're in the process of actually approving a change to the inclusionary housing and permitting rules that would basically incent smaller builds. So I think that's a hundred percent where we need to go. At the same time, you can't, you know, punish people that have lived here and are living in a big house, you know, it is what it is at this point. Um, so I think we need to be thoughtful about it and I think it would be nice to see a blend of you know, all of them. And as these five million dollar homes come up, maybe at that point, it's a great way to repurpose them in a way that's meaningful. Um, but I, you know, I definitely think there's value in looking at all different types of housing.
Yeah, cool. Well, I I love, one, one part I love about David's project is the car sharing aspect.
Yeah.
And I think that um uh, most of us don't want more cars in our city, like we feel like there's
Yep.
Like people, one of the questions that gets asked the candidates a lot is um is Boulder full?
Right.
And I kind of want to have this two part answer is like, yes, we have all the cars we can possibly stand. I don't want any more cars here. And uh, and then, but the but the other, the other half is like, no, I mean, if we if we have the number of cars and had more people, then it would, it would be a much more lovely city, obviously. Um, and so uh, I I would like to have more mechanisms to to tie how, like you, we were talking about incentives for allowing different kinds of housing. I think one kind of um option in lieu of incentives would be like takeaway parking or takeaway car you or or I don't want to, I don't want to use the words takeaway, but um have covenants or have lease agreements or just mechanisms to say, hey, um, this this kind of housing is going to be car light housing and this is how that works.
Yeah.
And I know that can be arranged through parking, but I feel like there's like an another side to
Yeah.
the parking reform that that has to do with leases and housing and
Yeah.
units.
Yeah, that's interesting. I mean, I I definitely am a fan of getting rid of the parking or substantially reducing the parking minimums um in the development projects with a big caveat, which is that we have to be mindful from an equity perspective of the families that rely on their cars to do their jobs and um, I would never want to do something that is gonna, you know, really be in conflict with their needs. So I think we have to be really thoughtful about that when we do projects and we take away parking. Um, because we don't have real realistically feasible options for everybody to get where they need to without cars. Um, so I think that's a really good, good approach and and I I think you're right. I think it's it's all about, there's a little bit of a chicken and egg, right? Like until you make people feel pain, they won't be incentive incentivized to find other ways to to commute. And so you do want to apply a little bit of pressure, but you also don't want to make life miserable. So we need to find a good, I think, middle ground.
Well, um, in some respects, life is already miserable for for people driving everywhere.
That's true.
So and then the then we are in a crisis of many different flavors, uh, you know,
Yeah.
uh, climate and housing being top of mind, but yeah, it's it's um man, I just, I I want to live in a city where I can walk out the door in a neighborhood where I can walk out the door, get everything I need and I want that for so many other people.
Yeah, for sure.
And um, right now, it's like we, we don't even walk out the door. We just get in the garage, get in the car.
I know.
Drive all over and it's
It's an interesting problem though too, because I think, you know, we're, we're a little bit in conflict because I I think the idea of the fifteen minute neighborhood is great. And then at the same time, we're getting rid of, we're building housing and getting rid of some of these light industrial and small business things that would support that fifteen minute neighborhood. And so I, we have to get, I think we, I and I'm sure there are housing experts out there and I'm not one of them. But, you know, just being really mindful in a very holistic way of because I think what's happened is we've built, we've invested a lot in, you know, kind of class A office space and a lot of this like commercial stuff that ultimately we're probably regretting post pandemic and we've got a lot of that. And then at the same time, we're getting, and those businesses also bring a lot of people in, right? Versus the kind of light industrial where you don't have that many employees, they're not that intensive. Um, so we just have to make sure we're not, we're not undoing some of the natural aspects of a fifteen minute neighborhood by moving towards other business types, you know?
Yep.
I don't even know if that was clear, if it was
No, that that makes sense to me. Okay, well, this has been a super interesting conversation.
Yeah, I've really enjoyed talking with you.
I don't know what time it is. Um, do you have anything else that's come up that you'd like to?
Oh, well, the one other thing that I really want to make a focus here, and I know that many of the candidates have said it, um but is e-bike um kind of policy and safety. Um, I have two teenage boys, one of whom has an e-bike and I've threatened him with his life if he doesn't, if he rides that with anybody else or does not have a helmet on. But I can see what's happening and I think that we as a city just, I, the e-bikes are amazing. They've, they've transformed our ability to commute to places.
Yes, and.
Yes, and and so now we need to catch up on that and, you know, not just for the kids, but I think really put more focus on really um formalizing our policies around, you know, safety, training, licensing and also building our commute infrastructure in a way that will allow for pedestrians and e-bikes and bikes and everybody to kind of do that in a symbiotic way.
Absolutely. One of the things that I just occurred to me that gets left out of this when you're describing your son is um there's uh some socialization
Yeah.
is really needed because we've got and and it it does seem to be younger people who are like really reckless and not thoughtful and and you know, I would, I would definitely rather have pedestrians and e-bikes sharing space than pedestrian and cars.
Yeah, for sure.
And so like the fact that we're getting out of our cars and getting into e-bikes, this is all positive. But um, there, there's some, there's some um uh, extra danger
Yeah.
for pedestrians that uh you you observe with these young kids
We need to, it needs to be addressed.
twenty five miles an hour and
Yeah, I mean, I I, you know, I was talking to Chief Harold a couple of weeks ago about this issue and I suggested that, you know, I know that we probably can't make laws on like, I don't know what kind of laws we have that we could make against minors on riding bikes or whatever. But I was like, if you could just have one of your officers like once a month pull over a reckless, you know, three kids that are riding on the bike without helmets, doing whatever.
On the one bike.
On the one bike, just do it once a month, just so that word gets out that the police are going after you guys. That gives us cover as like parents to then be like you look what what happens if you get in trouble. So
I can promise you that those kids are not listening to this podcast.
No, perfect, perfect, my secret's safe. But yeah, I think that we just need to really start kind of focusing on that. And look, it's not like the number one emergency, but I think if we're trying to get ourselves towards better, you know, transportation.
We want a healthy culture around biking and and getting out of our cars and it ought to be inviting and exciting and not not something that where every
Yeah.
every pedestrian is like, oh shit, I've got this new concern now that
Yeah, yeah. And then along with that is really kind of getting serious about bike safety because security, meaning not bike safety, bike security. Um, because, you know, like my son rides his bike to Boulder High School and he, for the first six months, wouldn't even ride it because he was afraid to leave it in front of the school. And so we've got to really make sure people feel reassured that they're not gonna lose their bikes.
They're not cheap.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, um, yeah, I'm all about e-bikes. I don't have a car. I live, I lived my whole life on an e-bike. So it's it's a it they're just really transformative. And I was telling you that I I did the tours last summer on e-bike tours. I don't know if I've mentioned on the podcast or not, but um, one of the things that I've loved about doing the e-bike tours was uh, I would have so many people that tried an e-bike for the first time. You know, it was like
I've never ridden one.
Oh, well, I, yeah, I mean
I'm scared. I mean, we have one in our house and I'm scared to get on it.
That's funny. Oh, you shouldn't be. You should give it a try. But it was really fun to, because when people get on it for the first time
Yeah.
and they they get that, that little thing kicks in, they're like, oh, you know, they make a little audible gasp and I live, I love that moment.
I would be one of those people because my husband always laughs at me. I'm a runner. I'm an avid runner. I am not very good on bikes and my husband always laughs at how bad I am on bikes. And so I think that would be an amazing like fix for me because part of it is I just don't like the uphill. I don't like any of it, you know, so.
Right. Yeah, there is no uphill on an e-bike, so.
That sounds amazing. Okay, I you've inspired me. I'm gonna, I'm gonna give it a whirl.
Cool. So um, yeah, I I uh the the, one of the things that was fun about that e-bike touring is that there was this aspect of evangelism. I've always felt like that was, you know, come, come to our side, you know, come join us. And a lot of people went away from that experience saying like, hey, what kind of bike should I buy? Because I want to buy one now. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go home and then, you know, spend some money on one.
Yeah, I've heard there's a new class of like bikes now of e-bikes or they're like tiny little bikes, like the kids are all riding them. They look like dirt bikes almost, but they're electro, electric.
Okay, no.
I don't know. Apparently they're even go faster, so.
Actually, this is actually kind of important because it's not just e-bikes. There's all kinds of these electrical mobility devices, some of which seem much more dangerous than others.
Yeah.
You know, you get some of these longboards that are going twenty, twenty five miles an hour. It's like, gosh, you know, like
I know. Well, I've just noticed in the last couple of days, a lot of those Lime scooters, I don't know if they changed a law.
Yeah, they did.
Did they?
It's it's citywide now.
Oh, okay.
You're gonna start seeing them.
I, because they've all been all over here. Yeah, okay. What, what, was that always in the works or when did that law change? I guess.
Uh, I think just uh they, this month, yeah. Um, so, yeah, I've I've been in the East Boulder uh Lime
Yeah.
pilot district and I use them all the time. I love them. My wife hates them. She she sees it as as um, you know, uh garbage on the street, you know, it's like filling and I'm, I always am like, people park their cars everywhere too. I mean, you should see our street. We have parked, there's cars every, people put their cars everywhere, you know? Uh, anyways. But yeah, the the Lime District, the Lime District is citywide now and I was just looking at the map yesterday. And it's funny, all the scooters that were available were still on the east side.
Not anymore. I just saw three of them like right over here.
I I assume they'll just, it'll just be Bernoulli's principle of
And is there a
Brownie in motion is
Is there a repositioning process or do they just always just sort of float around?
Oh, I don't know. Um, I I think, oh, yes, th- there is some process by which they reposition.
Okay.
But they also um will just replace the batteries sometimes. So like the the batteries comes right out, they pop in a full one. So I've had it um where I I park an empty battery scooter at my place.
Yeah.
And and then the battery will just get replaced so that it's ready to go. But other times, the scooter just disappears and I don't know if that's because someone else used it or or because they moved them back to where
I mean, my issue with it is just the helmets, like, so then do you have to kind of carry a helmet with you wherever you go? Is that, is that maybe we should all, we should start designing some really cool helmets that we'll just wear all the time.
Yeah, um, I I don't know if you know this, I mean, we're kind of in the weeds at this point, but um Wayland and I, when we had our conversation, we're talking about we neither one of us are really big helmet proponents.
Yeah.
Um, it's good for me to wear a helmet. It's good for you to wear a helmet.
Yeah.
But like from the epidemiological perspective, like telling everyone they have to wear helmets and trying to enforce that.
Yeah.
It's not as productive as getting more people on bikes and getting more people on Lime scooters. Like, the thing that makes bike cyclists more safe.
Right, is less cars.
Is less cars and more cyclists.
Yeah.
So
Interesting.
Um, and and helmets actually kind of work against getting more people involved, so.
Because they don't want to wear
They don't want to wear helmets.
Interesting.
So it it's um, again, please wear a helmet.
Yeah.
I wear a helmet, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Wayland does not wear a helmet.
But big picture, big picture. Yeah, my husband doesn't either and he always laughs at me when I wear mine, but you know, I I get it, I guess. And and you certainly in Amsterdam or
Yeah, I mean, when you see the the places where they really
I think we were there a few years ago when our kids were really young and we asked for helmets and they kind of looked at us like, what? Why would you wear a helmet?
You've got a skull.
Exactly. So.
Okay, well, um, Terry, thank you so much.
So good. It was great talking with you.
Podcast.
That's the best part of this campaign, honestly, is that I get to meet people I probably never would have crossed paths with before. So thank you for giving me the chance to talk with you.
You're welcome. Thanks for being on the show.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Gonna find me a residential pedestrian district where I can gracefully grow older. Gonna spend my remaining years sharing Boulder. Thank you for listening to Sharing Boulder. Please support the podcast. Thank you for listening to Sharing Boulder. Please support the podcast by sharing it with your friends and neighbors. You can contact me at link tree slash Philip Ogrin, which you can find by visiting sharingboulder.us where you can also find show notes and previous episodes. This episode of Sharing Boulder was produced by Philip Ogrin and edited by Katie Avery. The music was created by Nathaniel Ogrin and Sack Lunch. Keep sharing, Boulder.